All right, at this time, we're going to call to order a budget hearing of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, May the 25th, 2021, at 5:30 PM at the Franklin County Justice Center in Karnesville, Georgia. And we just note for the record, we have a quorum consisting of all our commissioners present for this afternoon's hearing. We want to welcome everyone and thank you for coming this afternoon. The purpose of this afternoon's hearing is to present the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget for the county, and this will be our second budget hearing. We've also, we'll also receive public comments on the budget tonight, but at this time, we need to approve tonight's hearing agenda with an amendment adding item 3-1B public comment. So at this time, is there a motion to approve tonight's hearing agenda with the addition of item 3-1B public comment?
I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda with the amendment of adding item 3-1 for a public comment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made the motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 3-1B public comment. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Foster, seconded the motions. Are there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 3-1B public comment, signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and tonight's agenda is so amended and approved. At this time, the next item on the agenda is item 1A, the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. At this time, we're going to turn the hearing over to our county manager, Mr. Turner, to present the proposed budget.
All right, thank you. All right, so this is the second of our hearings, um, that we're talking about. For our revenues, projected revenues, expenditures, or one vision to from last is healthcare that we just found out today, personnel and village, uh, so we'll talk about those briefly. Uh, so just as we're looking at projected revenues, uh, there hasn't been any change in revenues. The paperwork that you have in front of you is just the expenses credit off. Uh, revenues did not change from the last time that we met, so still projecting at $22,997,600 for our projected FY '22 revenues, uh, versus compared as you see with the FY budgeted for the 21-year, uh, $22,469,019 and 94 cents. Uh, so a slight increase of projected growth, uh, still going to budget on the conservative side of things, just so that we can make sure we give ourselves a little bit of room to wiggle. Um, expenditures, there were, there were changes, slight changes to expenditure primarily within the general fund, uh, but our expenditures, uh, still match as far as balancing the budget at $22,997,600 uh, compared to the current year FY '21 budgeted at $22,424 and $24.10. Uh, so still a slight increase, uh, basically the cost of, uh, unclassified loans that were being paid but not budgeted. Uh, so those loans, about $500,000 have already been paid, but were not included within the current year's budget, so we're just capturing that information, uh, is the primary difference within that. Uh, this budget number does include, and I kept us at the same exact expenditure budget number, this does include the proposals from our planning and development, uh, the planning zoning director, as well as the clerk of court, uh, both of those, uh, proposals that you heard last week. Uh, this number does include that, um, we just trimmed a little bit going towards, uh, some of the other areas that we have, um, especially within the chief manager's budget, uh, just to be, uh, still balanced and not have to increase our revenues at this particular time. Any questions, revenues or expenditures? All right, so one new item, we actually just worked through this primarily today is looking at healthcare. Um, and I think what, what I would suggest as we're kind of looking at healthcare, I think in the past, we've had the board vote on that. Um, what I would propose we do is if there's not significant changes as far as changing provider, uh, that the board will get it just still proven overall budget, uh, but I think if there's ever a time where we're looking at a change in provider, that'd be a time where the board, um, take action to say that we're going to change that provider, um, if, if the board is agreeable to that. But if not, I can have them come in to present, uh, what we're looking for this year and go through the detail of that.
I'd like to hear what they're offering this year.
Are there, are there going to be any drastic changes, like for the average employee?
No, uh, so actually with that, um, so what we're looking at is we're looking at staying with the, the initially proposed an 18% increase, uh, for the renewal. Uh, what we were able to do was we were able to go shoot them down to a 6% increase. Uh, so the difference in that, uh, number wise, an 18% increase would have been about a quarter billion dollars increasing, uh, towards what we would pay, uh, for employees for healthcare. A 6% increase, uh, well, 6% is pretty well your industry cost of living, uh, increase for healthcare is 6 to 8%. Uh, that number is going to come at about 80%, uh, $80,000. With that, uh, I do actually have the numbers, uh, that I can zip out there to find, you know, we're just kind of, we're still working through a couple of details within that as far as how that's going to impact individual employees or each level of plans. We'll still have the same exact plans, it's just going to be some slight differences, uh, more than likely as far as what the employees are paying and or what the county is paying for, whether we're contributing 100%. Uh, but I can get that information, and when we set up the next budget hearing, then I can make sure to have, uh, our broker come out to walk through that if, uh, or we're here, I'll walk through it, whichever one makes, uh, more suitable. Uh, but I think those, I think just as is, uh, as we're reworking some numbers, there's going to be, it's going to be a little bit lower for some of the areas, uh, that we've looked at, uh, but I believe plans change for employees paying per pay period, uh, from as low as about $1114, uh, per pay period. Uh, right now, it's constructed at about $50 per pay period, uh, but that's actually going to change, uh, to places that we just, uh, got on the phone this morning, uh, so we don't have solid numbers towards the top end of that, but that is going to lower, uh, item for sure, and I'll have that at the next hearing. Um, what this will do as far as our expense budget is, we will probably see a slight adjustment in our expense budget, um, just to cover, um, the overall $8,000, uh, and maybe just a slight increase towards that, so possibly something in around about $100,000. Uh, but we'll make adjustments accordingly, uh, if we need to trim within the expense budget or if we need to project, uh, revenues to slightly increase. Any healthcare questions? All right, again, personnel, um, if they're talking about coal raises, the cost of living, uh, wage increase, at right now, budgeted at about 3.5%, which is $450,000 approximately. Um, so right now, that all sits within my budget, the 5, 1, 3, 2, 0. Uh, what we'll do before approval of the budget is we'll distribute, uh, those, those funds to the individual departments, uh, when the budget's approved. Uh, so that reflects not in my budget, but then it'll reflect within each individual budget. Uh, again, we talked about the military rates as well, uh, so that'll still be something that we'll have to work through. Uh, we won't have to digest it until mid-June, uh, but just to compare, sort of what our military rate is, um, we did roll back from last year from, um, for the incorporated area from 11.96 to 11.7, and we're rolling back the unincorporated from 10.813 to 10.553, uh, with the IBAs standing at 1.25. This just shows that the school's military rate is at 17. So we will have a decision that we'll have to make as, um, we get a little bit closer to that time of, do we want to keep the military rate at the same level, um, raise the military rate or do we want to roll back? Um, again, this is just the neighboring counties, um, just looking at some slight information as far as, uh, military rate and also the census, and we'll talk a little more census as we get into the work session tonight. Uh, but this is just to give comparison for you to, to review as far as the military rates, uh, going school, county unincorporated, county incorporated, uh, just as we're looking at that from a comparative standpoint. Uh, so again, this is just a slide that's showing exactly where our military rate is currently. Uh, and what this slide is also showing is what the, uh, what home value prices with our military, what they would pay in taxes overall, so this does include the school as well. Uh, so for unincorporated, uh, home at a $200,000 value, you're paying approximately $2,200, $24. Uh, for a $150,000 home, about 1668, and for a home value of about $100,000, uh, homeowner's paying about $1,112 for unincorporated, that unincorporated military, 10.553. Uh, for the incorporated at the military rate of 11.7, uh, going from the top again, $200,000 home is paying about $2,316 per year in taxes, $150,000 home, spending about $1,737 per year. And for a home value of $100,000, they're paying approximately about $1,158. Uh, so that's just to give you some round numbers of home values and what someone would, uh, approximately be paying in taxes as we're currently constructing. Uh, again, and I can represent any models that, that you like, uh, for the next, uh, public hearing or email, uh, just so that you have the comparison of that, but this is just a comparison of if you took the incorporated area and rolled it back five quarters, so 1.25. So average drop is going to be talking about a drop of about $20, $20 for each of those home values.
Um, is it possible to have another option, uh, not saying that we would do it, but as far as rolling back millage for, uh, the cities in the way of making it the same as the county level? Did you mention that at the last meeting?
Oh, oh, for, um, so it's equalization of our unincorporated versus unincorporated. Yes, or our unincorporated and our incorporated. Uh, so what that would look like, what we're talking about then, um, since we currently have one military rate that's at 10.553, uh, and one at 11.7, then we can model to say that we're going to get to 10.553 if we want to do that. Um, so we can, what we can look at is a model that says all of them at 11.7, all of them at a, uh, 10.553. We can do something that meets in the middle, um, whatever the median of that is, 10.8. Uh, so we can look at any model that says that, and I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other budget questions that we may have?
Any questions? Okay.
So, um, so what we'll do, the next step that we'll have is we'll have another budget hearing scheduled. Uh, so we'll go through that, we'll look at those models, see what the military rate looks like, um, the adjustments that we'll have towards healthcare, and we'll also have healthcare, our, uh, healthcare broker to come and speak on that, or either I'll set up something for us, give you the information and have that. I have most of that information currently, uh, but, uh, we'll go through that line by line just to see what the difference is for employees, uh, just so that we kind of know that. Um, I will say with healthcare, we do want to take a look at that, um, and even though we did talk down to a better rate this year, we do still want to think to the future, uh, as far as our healthcare coverage, uh, what that's going to look like. Is there a better type of plan or system for us, uh, that we can have our broker talk us through any of those as well, just so that we understand the different type of options that we have available. Uh, we were just, some of those options, we would just have to work towards over the course of time, uh, so some of them might not be immediate, uh, but what I instructed him, my instruction to him was that we want to make sure we're not in a situation where we're kind of bouncing back and forth with provider review every year, because I mean, obviously, if staff is getting doctors or they prefer going to a certain hospital or a clinic or whatever the case may be, we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to sort their system within that and not have to wonder every year, do they need to bounce a body doctor, do they need to find new facilities, whatever the case is. So, um, we want to just be ourselves to look at what that plan can be long-term and more set ourselves on a three to five-year pace as far as skipping with somebody if at all possible.
And we, we talked about last time, uh, as far as personnel, are we, we doing interviews this week for the marshal position?
Uh, yeah, so I'll have that in the work session.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, all right. The next item on the agenda is public comment, uh, so at this time, we're going to open the floor for public comment. The purpose of this public comment section is to give citizens the opportunity to make comment about the budget. So your topic has to be related to the budget. We will have an open, uh, public comment section in the work session to follow if you want to talk about other issues, but if you make a public comment during this portion of the meeting, we need to keep it confined to the budget. Uh, this is not a question and answer session, but if you have questions, you can write those down and we'll get back to you within a few days, uh, and try to answer those concerns. Uh, as always with public comment, each person can speak once, uh, you have five minutes and we have, our clerk has a timer so that you can pace your remarks. Uh, you can only speak once and you cannot yield unused time to another person. Members of the public are bound to the same rules of the quorum as commissioners. That means that you use respectful discourse, you avoid public attacks, um, and any kind of inappropriate displays. So at this time, if you raise your hand, if you want to make a public comment, we'll get you to come up to the podium. Please give the clerk your name and address before you begin and address your comments to the board. Come on up.
My name's Steve Forson, I live at 244 Skyline Way, Oklahoma. My hope, Jason, and other members, other commissioners, when we hire a marshal this time, make him be as good as Matt was and get him some damn help, or in French, that's more than one man can do. We've got a mess growing in our county, if you haven't been out around Gumlock, come out and take a look. We got to stop it, the only way we can do it is with a good marshal and a marshal who's got some help. And as I said before, I put my money where my mouth is, I'll ride with him free for two months, because I know where they all are, we need to do something now before it gets out of hand, and thank you very much for the job you do for the county.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Anyone? Okay, uh, at this time, we'll move on to announcements, uh, Mr. Turner, do you have any other announcements during the hearing? Okay, all right, commissioners, do you have any announcements? All right, at this time, we're going to adjourn the public hearing and we'll start the work session at 6 o'clock. So without objection, we stand adjourned. All right, at this time, we're going to call to order a work session of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, May the 25th, 2021, at 6 o'clock PM in the afternoon at the Franklin County Justice Center in Karnesville, Georgia. Welcome everyone, thank you for joining us tonight, and we just note for the record again that we have a quorum of all, consisting of all commissioners present. Uh, at this time, we're going to have an invocation followed by the pledge of the flag, so we ask that you remain standing after the invocation and join us in the pledge. Please stand.
Well, we thank you for, uh, a chance to come together in service of the county, um, and of our neighbors and friends. Um, pray that you give us, uh, wisdom as we consider, um, some different things that we'll be dealing with this, uh, this week and, um, help us to make wise decisions in doing so, and then we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, we need to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Foster has made the motion to approve the agenda, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin, a seconded the motion, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as presented, signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and tonight's agenda is approved as presented. At this time, we're going to open the meeting for public comment. During this portion of the meeting, any member of the public may speak on any topic of concern that they would like to address to the board. Because the board may not be able to prepare for questions and answers ahead of time, this is primarily a comment section. If you have questions, we're going to ask that you write those down, give those to the clerk, and we'll try to get back in touch with you in a few days and go over those questions and answers and try to answer your concerns. Please understand that the board will not be able to engage in any discussion about any pending planning and zoning items tonight. It's very important that all planning and zoning items be handled during the specific meetings that have been set aside for those issues, and this is so that the applicants and the petitioners have the opportunity to be present and have due process. When you come up to the podium, we're going to ask you to begin by giving your name and address to the clerk in order to facilitate the meeting and allow everyone the opportunity to speak. Everyone is limited to five minutes, uh, you don't have to take five minutes, but you have up to five minutes. Each person may speak one time, you cannot yield your unused time to another person. The clerk has a timer so that when you're up here, you can look at that timer and kind of judge how much time you have remaining and adjust your remarks. Members of the public are required to follow the same rules of the quorum as commissioners, and this means respectful comment of civil discourse and avoiding any personal attacks. Uh, we're going to ask that you address your comments to the chair and to the board, uh, and members of the public may not interrupt or speak while someone else is speaking. At this time, does anyone have a public comment they'd like to make? Okay, come on up. And again, if you'll start by giving your name and address.
Richard Roberts, 150 Roberts Drive, Austin. Uh, yesterday, I had come up to the courthouse, to the memorial park, to, uh, look at where we was going to put out flags for the Memorial Day celebration, and as I got there, I noticed someone had put a sign on the backside of the, uh, post for the, uh, memorial flags, and I went over and took it down because with, each of you know how patriotic I am, the order that they signed with, and I got very upset and I won't control my temper tonight, and I was going to bring out the name, but I'm not going to go since you said no personal attacks, I won't not say it. But I think we need to probably come up with some kind of ordinance on this for that, to ban putting any kind of signs or banners or anything around the memorial park, that's a memorial park, or the first responders', uh, memorial once it gets finished.
Will you, after the meeting, will you, will you talk to the county manager so we can know who it was, the business, just so we can address that?
Yes, I've done this quote to him.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, thank you.
But, I mean, and the ordinance, when we do it, I would like to make, make sure that the fine is stiff enough that they know that it's not acceptable doing it, and I would like to recommend at least a minimum of a $250 fine for doing it, because...
Do, do we have any kind of ordinances now that would, that would, I know we have a nuisance ordinance, I don't know that it specifically talks about that.
I, I don't think there's one that specifically addresses this, we probably have to create one that, uh, more identifies directly towards this matter.
We need to look, see if there are state laws too that would allow law enforcement to deal with that now. I mean, there may be something already that we can charge, because that would be considered defacing, I, I guess, defacing a memorial.
Because one thing to remember, we do have Gold Star families in this county that lost loved ones during the, uh, War on Terror, and that Gold Star family would have came by and seen that. How would that make you feel of them disfiguring that memorial? And I'm just pleading with you, please do something about it.
Well, we're, we're going to look into that because we, I don't, I mean, I don't think when we had the memorial before, that was an issue, but I don't know that for a fact, but we need to make sure there's something we can use to address that, especially if we know, we have direct evidence who it is, uh, in that case. But we appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rob. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm sure that all of y'all have heard about the Pilgrim's Pride, Rendrick Plant, pardon, excuse me, now, sorry, Allen Har, 2656 Bray's Lake Road, Austin. Say something? Um, back in 1964, when the Franklin County High School consolidated the, uh, schools in the county, I crossed over the north fork of the bridge, north fork of the Broad River Bridge, two times a day, from '64 to '67 when I graduated, but I never thought about what that river meant. All the way to the bridge to cross and get schooled on them. So the first thing I did when I started looking at this, I only want, there's a lot of issues around this, but I just want to talk about the river tonight. The first thing I did was started doing a little research on the river itself. And the best thing I found, one of the best things I found was this quote, "The Broad River is among the last three holy rivers in Georgia and perhaps the state's most wild. It was one of Georgia's first inland river valleys to be explored itself. Along its course are rare species like shovel spider lilies and a unique species of fish called the Barkin's bass." I did not find any writings that might go like this. "The Broad River is among the last three holy rivers in Georgia and perhaps the state's most wild. It's a perfect candidate to be a conduit through which industrial wastewater can be sent downstream to Franklin, Madison, Elbert, Oathorpe, and Whittaker into the Savannah River Basin that will be up in Clark Hill Lake, which is managed by the U.S. Corps of Engineers to fish rebote Georgia and South Carolina VCR." From the, I think these folks should have a little map, but I'm not, I'm going to point to this one over here. If you look, shoot them in the eye. The, the part of the river we're talking about starts approximately where the plant proposed, uh, place is supposed to be, and it goes down to the Franklin County Line and then follows all the way down to go to the Savannah River at the upper end of Clark Hill Lake. There, there are several different measurements I found that how long that is for the thing includes the, uh, northern and middle, or just where they merge together. So I think a ruler kind of did a, just a measurement of the distances on that map you see. 20% of that river from the time, from the time it leaves that Rendrick Plant that's there to the county line is 20% of that total river distance. And we know that the river doesn't stop at the county line. 80% of the rest of that goes all the way down through the county convention, which are Madison, Elbert, Oathorpe, and Whittaker. So the thing I want to delve into now, what is the risk that we're looking at with this Rendrick Plant and that river? In Pilgrim Pride, where perfect world promises, if the promises are to be believed, their estimate of 450,000 gallons of water per day out of the fluid discharge in addition to the one and a half million dollar gallons per day from GRP into Indian Creek, which flows into the Broad River, presents the risk of downstream bank erosion and floodplain inundation. And, and when we talk about perfect worlds, I can't help but hear the echoes of the perfect world promises made by GRP, promises made but not kept. So the first thing is, that's the water volume issue, the other one is the water pollution. March 18th, 2021, the Plains zoning committee meeting, Mr. Mark Glover, who's the general manager of Pilgrim's Team, diversion division, reported in there that Pilgrim's has 37,000 employees and some of them make mistakes. Now, I worked in information technology for all of my career, and we designed a lot of computer systems for the companies that I've worked for. We, we always, we were looking at design, tried to figure out how to keep authorities from coming, the garbage data coming out of the system, and one of the jokes we had was, it's impossible to design a food group system because schools are so ingenious. So, on April 28th, 2021, at the stockholders' meeting of Pilgrim's Pride, there was a group of stockholders who proposed, um, what was made pertaining to Pilgrim's water pollution record. This is documented in Pilgrim's 2020 annual report on pages 43 and 44.
I'm going, I'm going to stop you there, just if you can wrap it up in a sentence.
Um, at any rate, there was about six points that they had of, um, water pollution associated with Pilgrim's Pride, and they're, they were asked to get a report, not any action, but just a report on how they could increase the schedule based rigor of Pilgrim's Pride effort to reach water pollution. So what now, here's the file.
Wrap, wrap it up real quick, because your time's up, we got to stick to our schedule.
Pilgrim's seemingly little interest in water pollution mitigation, the potential of Pilgrim's promises made not kept, and/or mistakes made by Pilgrim's employees related to the fluid discharge in the Broad River, presents a significant risk in all five counties touched by the river. You, as the committee, have representation for 20% of that river.
All right, I'm going to have to cut you off there, okay, I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Gabe, anybody else like to speak?
You need this, Duncan. Both, you don't know how much we trust y'all. You're, you are our voice in everything that happens. And I want to submit something as Rod Serle would say if he were here, for your consideration. He had to be driving a 1961 Falcon, long time ago, wasn't he? So why in the world are we being controlled in so much what this IBA does by something that's been in place since 1961? I would like to propose a new way of doing business. Seventy percent of us, y'all don't mind buying probes, do you? Seventy percent of us...
Yeah, he has that, I'm quoting him, I'm sorry.
I made another one too, so, I'm half per dollar and half alligator. So many of us are not even represented with that, with dedicated representation. I'd like to propose a new way of doing it. I know it's a state thing, but those things can be changed because your elders don't change it for you. Why not have all members of the IBA at large? Let's have one from Gunlock, God knows. Let's have one from Red Hill. But let's have it so that people feel like somebody's not coming up with another great idea, like in Corbin, Gunlock, or bringing a rendering plant here. Let's use some common sense. Those things aren't common sense. You guys are smart. We don't know them, but we don't need any politicians on the IBA. I will further say this, again, we put my money where my mouth is, there's very smart people in this county that aren't on the IBA, but we know a lot of companies that would gladly consider coming here. We missed one by two months. I wanted so much to bring, but when all this started with rendering plant, I couldn't do it. But there, there's clean industry like call centers. Big companies are looking for them right now. That's the cleanest thing that could ever be out. I'd like to see one sitting on the banks of the river because it's computers, telephones, and bright people that would come from our very own technical college. Let us get with 2021 thinking, not sitting with stinking thinking like 1961. God bless you, we trust y'all, we just don't trust them.
Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak? Come on. If you will remember to start by giving your name and address.
The Boy's School, 10492, Highway 59, Albonia, Georgia. Mostly all the name, and thank y'all for letting me come here tonight. Thank y'all for serving. I know this is a service to our county and our residents, but we do try hard to help them in the city, city story of this county, and I appreciate that, I really do. I talk to all of your about local companies, and I really appreciate it. Tonight, I want to talk about something that's heavy on a lot of the heart. It's this planting season in, in springtime in Franklin County, you see farmers out here today on tractor planting, rip crops and cutting hay and doing things. I want to plant two seeds with you tonight. Y'all just to think about it. I'm not looking for an answer tonight, I just want you to start thinking about this. The, both of them concern the IBA, okay? First of all, the IBA was set up in the 1960s by state and local legislation. We had one county commissioner at that time in the 1960s, you know, not five. You know, times were different then. Now things are a lot different than they were back then. When you start thinking about modifying the way the IBA is set up, five mayors, or only seven members, five mayors, three of those mayors are from small tiny cities. As a matter of fact, if I can get it right here, Carlsburg has a population of 500 and nothing like that, they've got a member on the IBA. Cannon has a member, population of 804, they have a member on the IBA. Franklin Springs has a population of 952, they have a chairman in the IBA, he's actually the chairman. But the undercooperative Franklin County makes up about 70% of the population of Franklin County, the last census I could, I could tell. But we only have two members at large. Y'all need to build a point, some more members, y'all need a member yourself. You know, as a matter of fact, I feel like the chairman should be a voting member of the IBA. Why not? Not just a person up there listening or whatever, he should be a voting member of the IBA. The president of the Chamber of Commerce should be a voting member. We should have an agricultural leader, or more than one agricultural leader on the IBA. Agriculture is the leading, you know, business in this county. It's the money maker, correct? But not right. Why isn't somebody from agriculture on the IBA? I don't understand it. That's what, that's my first thing. Is, our state representative, I've talked to him personally, he is interested in talking to y'all, if y'all can come up with a resolution of how y'all would like to see the sign, he is definitely interested in updating the statement. So please, just start thinking about it. I urge you, now's the time to do it. So next winter, when they meet, he can bring something up to bring us up to date, you know, to pick for this county. Undercooperative Franklin County represents 70% of the population, but we need more representation on the IBA, that's just a fact. Second thing, the IBA's mileage rate, can this be reduced?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, the what?
The IBA mileage rate.
Oh, mileage rate.
Mileage rate, can it be reduced? That's a question I have. And if it can, let's make, let's put a study together on that, look in and reduce it. They have over $500,000 in the bank and have it in there for 12 months. What are they doing with it? Why do they need to keep our money like that? I mean, we could do a lot of things with half a million dollars, you know, we could pay a lot of heels on these dirt roads people complain about, we could, you know, make some improvements so people could see and realize some things. We could hire a couple more deputies and keep our county a little bit safer. There's a lot of things we could do with half a million dollars just sitting over there in the bank. I don't understand it. You know, if they're, if they're doing something with it, show us their productive industry as a way. I don't see a way.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rob. Okay, would anybody else like to speak? Anyone else like to make a public comment? Okay, here now, we'll move on to the next item. First item is 5A vehicle leasing. Tonight, we have representatives from Enterprise who are going to make a presentation on the leasing program for the county. If you guys come up and introduce yourselves.
So, yeah, we do have Enterprise here tonight, just going to just give an overview of what their programming is and what that would look like within Franklin County. We can get into more detail and kind of go through the details with them in more depth, but if it's something that we have, can't withstand, then probably that was just going to be an overview.
Good evening. My name is Ray Simpson, I'm the county executive of Enterprise Fleet Management, and with me is Hunter Lilwood, a client strategy manager for Enterprise Fleet Management. So first of all, I'll say thank you for having us out tonight and granting us a few minutes to speak with you about a potential partnership with your great county. So Enterprise Fleet Management, you all know the rental car company, I'm sure, rented a vehicle at the airport or a local rental franchise somewhere. So Enterprise is very large, has the largest fleet in the entire world, 2.1 million vehicles. And so that's, that's a lot of industry information, the knowledge and know-how. That's our rental arm. We actually have a small division that works with commercial companies and government agencies, and that's referred to as Enterprise Fleet Management, and that's the division of Enterprise that Hunter and I work in. So I work probably about 75% of the commercial organizations throughout the state of Georgia, and then about 25% for different government agencies. So Enterprise Fleet Management currently has the state of Georgia contract, and we've had that for about nine years. We're the only fleet management company to have that contract, and again, we've had it for about nine years now. We're members of both GMA and ACCG, which you can go on to the website, there's different forums, we'll speak about us and some of the services we provide. So currently, in the state of Georgia alone, we have about 150 to 160 different government partners from the state level down to the city level as well. So after your locally, City of Lavonia, which is one of our current, we're current customers, in fact, Hunter, you met with the city manager here this afternoon, he's talking about game plan and upcoming model year, given the current COVID conditions in the vehicle world. City of Hartwell is a customer of ours, Roswell, Monroe, we have County of Cherokee, where I live myself, Bartow County. So again, about 160 different agencies at state level, we have the Department of Defense, the Department of Revenue, the Department of Audits, and again, about 160 total. So what we do is we help our government partners acquire a new fleet at or below their existing budget. So we don't ever meet with a government agency and say, listen, you've got to spend more and here's why. It's not that kind of scenario here. What we want to do is run a more efficient fleet, make decisions a little bit differently, and spend money in a different manner and method than what we did previously. So we took the current fleet information that we were provided by the county, and we go through a government oversight committee we have at our corporate office, provide the information to them, and they generate a 10-year model for the county. And I actually have that here tonight to review with you very briefly in the few minutes that I have. It's pretty in-depth, but I'll go over it at a high level if I fit with you, and then you can ask any questions you may have regarding it. So if I could jump into that. The first page I'd like to reference, if you all have these two sheets in front of you? Apologize, I thought they were submitted previously, you might have access to the overhead, but if you don't have that. So the first sheet I'd like to bring to your attention, it says County of Franklin Fleet Profile. I'm not going to spend too much time on this, just so you can see how in-depth it is, right? But this is Enterprise taking your existing fleet and beginning to make sense of it, okay? One thing we know that most of our government agencies and government partners is they're really concerned about the purchase price of vehicles, right? How much is they spending on the vehicles, how many dollar, budget dollars do they have, therefore, how many vehicles may acquire using those budget dollars? Then what they do, they buy the vehicles, they forget. Generally, they run the vehicles until the wheels fall off, they can take those wheels back on and keep running the vehicle. Now, what we know if you're running our own fleet of vehicles, 2.1 million in our own that we operate, is that that becomes counterproductive, right? There's a point where you cross a threshold, there's no value to the vehicle, your maintenance and, and fuel costs begin to skyrocket, right? So this first sheet is just simply us making heads or tails of what your fleet, you can see a breakdown of your fleet of vehicles on the left there, from mid-sized sedan to different pickup types, right? The average miles of those vehicles, how many you have in fleet, the average age of that vehicle. One thing I would highlight before we discard this sheet and move on to the major plan itself, is this red box down here on the left, right? This is just something to, for note for you all. You have currently have those seventy vehicles that we've identified to work well within our program. You have 48 of them that are over 10 years old. And so it wasn't until about 2012 that electronic stability control became standardized in those vehicles, which as you all may know, is a, is a, is a technology that keeps a vehicle on the road when oversteering and correcting, especially in adverse weather conditions. Things like curtain side airbags, anti-lock brakes, potentially are not standard in the majority of your fleet currently today, which is a safety concern, potentially even a liability concern, but also impacts morale, recruiting and retention from sheriffs, deputies to average county employees as well. So that's just something to be, to be aware of. Moving on to page, second page, this is really the meat and potatoes of the plan, right? So I'll walk you through this briefly. I know there's a ton of numbers on here, but once I, once I explain it briefly, hopefully you'll be able to flow if they understand how it operates and how it reads. So the top box here in the, kind of called gray and white, is just informational. So we're saying current fleet, call it 70, current fleet growth, zero, we're not proposing adding any vehicles, right? If you look down below, the first, next box below the current fleets is current cycle, that's 14. So what that's saying is that whenever you all, as a county, purchase a vehicle, you're holding on to it for an average of 14 years, which we would tell you, again, is that well past that counterproductive point where it's costing you more operationally than, than a new vehicle would. And so what we're proposing is on the far right below the proposed fleet, and that's 3.8. We're proposing what we refer to as a cycle period or an average hold period for your vehicles of 3.8. That's going to vary. Some of your ERV, emergency response vehicles, your sheriff's vehicles, they're going to have a little bit longer hold period because of the amount of aftermarket incorporated in the units. But some of your halftime pickup trucks, where you are already purchasing them well below the market value, we're proposing a much shorter hold period, some of them as short as 12 months. I'll give you an example, the market, not just because of COVID conditions today, the market is extremely hot, but prior to the scenario we find ourselves in, which we are benefiting from the hot, hot used car market, but prior to that, we've been selling, reselling government agency pickup trucks for well above what that county or city paid for. So City of Covington, for example, we just sold nine vehicles, nine pickup trucks for them, at $65,000 above their purchase price overall. So again, you can operate a vehicle for one year and then resell it for what you paid for. So there's going to be a deferring levels or hold periods for vehicle types, but let me walk you through the models and get to that point here. So this bold line here, this is average, this represents your plan today. Whether you all have created a proactive plan or not, this is essentially how the county has been operating for many years past, going back to the oldest vehicle, the fleet. So what we're seeing is, again, we're going to call your fleet size 70, it's larger than that because you have a number of heavy duty vehicles that we're not going to incorporate into the plan today, things such as freight liners and that, that sort of vehicle type. This is more your light duty and medium duty units. So 70 vehicles, the next, next line says annual needs, that's five, excuse me a little later. So on average, you're acquiring about five vehicles a year as a county. Lease to zero, you all have not been leasing, as far as I can tell, in the past. And then that purchase amount, you see that line there, that's about what you've been spending per year on your five vehicles, $165,000. The next line is, the next section there, equity home. When you're selling your vehicles, understand you're taking them in the dump deals and selling them for whatever you made it from scrap, $500 a pop or whatever the highest bidder gives you. The next number is going to be your maintenance thing, okay? That's about what we're spending on our fleet right now for maintenance based upon its older age condition. That's $147,000. You all follow me on that? Okay, moving further to the right is your fuel expense. Again, that's just using the average miles of your fleet today, understanding what the fuel economy is of that older, older fleet, you've got $168,000. When you add your purchase price, purchase amount, purchase budget to your maintenance and fuel spend, we get a total fleet budget, a better way of saying that is total fleet spend of $478,250. Do you all see that? Follow me on that map? Okay. So we're proposing, we're proposing in year 2021, the 2021 is just representative of year one of the program, but on 2021 is replace 14 vehicles, all right? Don't, don't purchase five vehicles, but replace 14 vehicles through the Enterprise Open and Equity Lease Program, okay? Again, I know I use the word lease, and I know it says leasing on the agenda, it's a unique leasing structure that allows for us to sell a vehicle in a term and hand the equity for the cash of that resale back to the county. Okay, so that's uniqueness of this program. So again, what we're saying is replace 14 vehicles. Now you go from 70 home down to 56. Now your lease goes from zero because you have not been leasing in the past, it goes to 14. Your purchase amount is zero because you're not paying cash or anything day one, and your lease expense for that first year for 14 vehicles is, is about 60, almost said about $70,000 less than what you've been spending buying five, okay? Then you can see the equity home coming back from us selling 14 vehicles, and within that first year, we're going to provide some cash back from reselling pickup trucks as an example. By replacing your 14 potentially oldest and most at-risk units, we're also going to have a significant impact on your maintenance dollar now. So we're proposing that $147,000 a year initially year one goes down to 129. That's a conservative estimate, we believe it's going to be more significant than that, but again, everything we do is conservative. So your fuel impact, we're going to save you about $7,000 for it. That's difficult to really challenge, if the fuel, price of fuel goes up by a dollar, how can we truly say we're saving you that money? But we're just saying we're saving you that in comparison to what you would have spent without us. And so if you look at year one on our fleet budget, again, or fleet spend, it's, it looks like a total cash appalate of $322,000. Again, if you compare that to your previous spend year over year as an average of $478,000, that year one savings is $156,129 back to the county of Franklin. And then so that's just year one, I'm not going to take that much more time than I've been given so far, and I appreciate it. That's year one. You can just simply see the flow from year one all the way through year 10. So over a 10-year period of time, what Enterprise is proposing is that we're going to save you $467,000. We're also going to sustainably after that, save you on average $32,000 a year for year 11, 12, and for perpetuity there. But while we're saving you that money, we're also going to break down the average age of each of your vehicles in the county from a current 14-years-old to an average 3.8. Again, impacting the safety, increasing morale, improving retention abilities for the county. What, what can, that's about all I have for the plan itself. What questions do you all have for me this time?
Mr. Rob, do you have questions? We have, I'm sorry.
These in the blue down here, those are, I guess ERV is an emergency response vehicle, is that what that stands for on the bottom?
On the first sheet, it says fleet profile at the top?
Yes.
No, that's just simply representing and highlighting the fact that out of the 70 vehicles we've identified for this program, those all are older than 10 years, putting them at risk for safety concerns and the, and the liability concerns.
Okay, the three at the bottom, they have an ERV out beside them right there.
Oh, also, I see your, yeah, so that's, we just highlighted the emergency response because yes, sir, good question, sorry about that.
Okay. Other questions? Let, let us, this is a lot of information, we need time to digest that, and when, I'm sure we can have you back to go over this in more detail once we've had a chance to look at this.
Yes, sir.
But we appreciate you coming. Do you have any questions for us?
No, sir, I've been reviewing the information and getting quite a depth in the number of weeks now, months, I should say, with the county manager. I would say that the city manager of Lavonia, just call him, I believe he was a member of the board at one time here, recommended, offered up his services and ability to be a referral source for us. And then we just met with him today on one of our meetings to update the fleet plan for the future upcoming model year, make sure things on track. And what we've represented in the past is what's happening out there, so I think he can speak to that fact that what we've presented to them as well as what we've presented to you is factual, and we would have the actual impact that we're saying we would.
Okay, all right.
I've got one question.
I'm sorry.
Would it change anything if, we've got, what, five cities in the county, if we joined together?
It's a good question. I'll tell you, you all are already, from my understanding, purchasing off the state contract. So you're probably talking about it as some type of volume-based discount, and so we would actually leverage the state of Georgia contract from a purchase, from a price standpoint to purchase the vehicles, and we really wouldn't do any better than what you're doing today. What we would do for you is a couple of things. One, we have a maintenance program, we would be able to fix and budget your maintenance expense each month. So what it is, month one, is what you'd spend, say, month forty-eight on the program or month sixty. So we help with that, controlling those costs. But namely, what we know to do is when to replace vehicles, right? So we decrease significantly the hold period that you have, and then we resell it. So a lot of folks don't understand is Enterprise makes a lot of money reselling our rental car vehicles. In fact, we buy them at one point, just as we do for the city I was referring to earlier, and then we'll sell them for a profit, let on that line. And so we have a ridiculous, really, really large infrastructure that we just ask you to get in line with and piggyback off of. So continue to utilize that great buying power that you have, benefit off our resale of building the back end, and that's how the program meshes and works.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
And with that, this isn't a decision or a quick decision that we have to make towards any type of programming like this, but just broad information, we can look in more detail as we go along, and still gives us more budget to prove if it's something that we decided we want to go forward with about a solid month, and some change to be able to look at that in more detail, understand how that impacts us. Good question, too, of looking at some things. We'll look at some things like that in the overall next budget, and how this isn't a decision we have to make tonight or in the next couple of weeks, we have a little bit of time towards that.
All right. All right, the next part of the agenda is a manager's report, so we're going to turn it back over to you, Mr. Turner, to do the report. And he has several items for us.
Yes, and I'll be, we're going to be looking at quick items. Second. All right, so just real quick, going through personnel, talk about last month about positions that we have searched for right now. So we actually were able to make an offer and hire assistant agents a little bit before I started, right at the time that I started first. We did have interviews for the marshal, so I actually update, we had one that was a no-show, and are extending an offer tomorrow, for tomorrow, in a couple of weeks. Also, another action that we did have is this last month is we did hire an entry-level accountant, so we were actually able to hire an accountant that just graduated from medical college here in these past couple of weeks. She'll begin on June first, and we'll go through and send our auditors, talk about them helping with that training, and also some of the other business talent that I have. Just going to talk just very briefly about census, so these are just preliminary numbers that have come out, just so we kind of understand that in the latter fall, we'll get the official numbers, but this is just to give us a little bit of a glimpse into this, because census does, of course, impact the budget. So as we're kind of looking at the census for the county, our 2010 census was twenty-two thousand eighty-four. Census estimated, and again, these are prelim numbers, the census estimate is twenty-three thousand five hundred four from the new count. Percent change is about a positive six point four percent, and the estimated numerical change gives us a number of about one thousand four hundred and twenty. So this is just a graph, a quick chart that just shows a lot of our neighbors, so this is practically a lot of the northeast corridor, just to show, give us comparison points to what our census tracking is. The two red, I know it's a little tough to see those, so the two red that you see there, that's Elder County that was down about eight hundred and thirty within the population, and then you have Stevens County, that was down just about sixty-eight, that's about sixty-eight lower. So just in comparison, you do sort of notice a couple counties sort of to the west of us as you get into the towns, Union, Flunkin County, and White County that all have double-digit growth. So I think just as we're looking at our census, it gives us just a good idea of, you know, what potential growth could be here as we are maybe doing some measures to add at homes and those businesses throughout the course of time. I would say just as we just evaluated the census, a number of about fourteen hundred would probably indicate to us most likely that we're talking about residents having children, probably not a substantial tax base growth within that ten-year period. That can have a little bit of a negative impact to us in some respects. So this just kind of gives a little bit of a picture to what that impact means, if you're saying that within that fourteen hundred is primarily, you know, for the most part, people having children. So this top line, and I didn't put labels to it, but I'll just explain what that means. Top line is if you had someone that was born in 2010, this is the stretch until they're probably working class and contributing to the tax base. So when you have someone born in 2010, they're probably not contributing to the tax base until about 2028 on a substantial level, you might have people that are sixteen, working on part-time jobs, whatever the case may be, but just for numbers and visual, we're saying that they're not 28. So then you're gaining their tax base numbers from 2028 and beyond. The thing to really think about within that factor is that from 2010 until 2028, you have that growth of non-taxpaying citizens, how many do you lose? So you kind of end up with a net negative. So just as we're thinking about our growth and how we do want to grow this accounting, please, you know, just keep in mind it's with that census number, our census number change, and how the census is actually. Just a couple of quick highlights that we had here within the last month, is we were able to have a film come and shoot, and thanks to the sheriff's office for participating in that with us, but we were able to shoot in the Crestview neighborhood, just down the street from the jail, so we were able to have a film called Mumps, independent film, come here to shoot for us. They were here for about a day, about four days, so but they were basically in the Crestview subdivision, see the young man chasing the bus with a camera behind him, he essentially just running down the road, they hop in the bus, drive back, and rinse and repeat. So he probably got tired after he did all this. But what is, I think, a good, something good for the county, also something good for the neighborhood, and something that we can put a take pride in. That's just a picture of what the mounted camera on the car looks like, changing. Also, just within this last month, just so everybody does know that we did have Michael Mayfield Senior Gym Dedication, so we do thank everybody that was able to come out for that, the community event. I think that we really had a great time with that, and it was very impactful. The family was very happy with that as well, so that was another thing that we did, that was actually that same weekend, too, so. We will have action coming in the regular meeting, just to mention, just talking about county alcohol sales, that'll be a board decision, just so that you're prepared for that. We talked about that in pretty good depth, so I won't go through the numbers in totality again, but that will be an action. So county attorney will have resolution drafted for us for the board to take action. I know that we try to limit anything that's being added to the agenda for that regular meeting, obviously, since we have major events going on with that, but we just want to make sure that we're ready to kind of get that action taken care of, because if it is a vote in favor of proceeding with the action, we would need to. And just again, just as we talked about last month, we do have the opportunity to look at the potential of literacy, that we talked about, the organization Keep America Beautiful, and that that does have to be citizen-led, so if there are, again, any citizens out there in the audience tonight, or you're online, want to join in this, that would be interested in helping to start this nonprofit, you live in the county, it would be an opportunity for us to join together as a community to help solve our literary issues that we receive complaints of. This organization is something that would probably be named Keep Franklin Beautiful, but opportunity to where we get that social engagement, it's something that is citizen-led again, so it's an opportunity to where the citizens are able to lead that, the organization trains them, the county would happily sponsor those efforts, maybe sponsorship to start that organization for the county, through the citizens, it's about forty-six hundred, and the county would gladly, I'll speak for the county, the county would gladly cut the check tomorrow, if there are citizens that are interested in leading that organization for us, they call my offices. That is, oh, I'll save you for a second. But that's everything I have as far as this is.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Turner? I mean, it is, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Turner. Do you have other, we'll move on to the next item or announcement, so do you have announcements?
So just a few announcements that we have come from our offices, is we'd just like to congratulate the Franklin County Class of 2021 for graduating, wish them the best. Next thing that we have is the Franklin County High School Baseball Team. They did do a great job, and unfortunately, they weren't able to pull through against the law in the third game, but we're very proud of our team, you know, they represented the county very well, so we're very proud of them for their efforts in this season and in the term. Also tomorrow, the Fulton County Health Department is hosting a vaccine clinic at the Royston Housing Department from nine to eleven a.m. Walk-ins are welcome, but appointments are preferred. You can find the information on the county's website. The next vaccine clinic will be Tuesday, June eighth, from two to four p.m. You can find the information on our website.
And that one is tomorrow?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
All right, just a few more announcements and I'll be done. We're placing the first order of our bricks for the Veteran Bricks of Honor this Friday for Franklin County Veterans Memorial. The bricks are seventy-five dollars a piece as grade additions to the memorial. We'll keep selling these bricks until they're completely sold out, but in order for us to have the dedication of the memorial, we have to place a cutoff to that so that we can get the order in place, get everything, all the bricks in place. We're planning on a community event for the Bricks of Honor, and we'll announce that information as soon as that comes available. Next thing, we'd like to welcome our citizens to the Fulton County Veterans Memorial Day. Oh, sorry. See, you do some things too many times, and sorry, great little habits. But to the Franklin County Veterans Memorial Day, Monday, May thirty-first, gathering at eight thirty a.m. Dustin Morgan has put together a ceremony to honor those that sacrificed for our freedoms. So again, it's going to be Memorial Day, Monday, the very first, they'll start gathering at eight thirty a.m. Next thing, the Livonia Chamber of Commerce is hosting a virtual squadron of veterans barbecue cook-off and charity court-hall tournament on June the fifth, from nine a.m. to six p.m. They have tickets available for pre-sale, just contact Livonia Chamber of Commerce for more information. And last announcement is that we have two different board appointees. The defect board is looking to build two positions. These positions will be appointed and announced in the June Board Commissioners Meeting, and the Planning Commission is currently accepting applications for a board appointee. The board will appoint this person in the July.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Turner. I've got a couple of announcements. This is just a reminder, we all know, that on Monday, June the seventh, the board will hold a public hearing and a regular board meeting, and this will begin at five o'clock p.m. in that afternoon. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments for or against proposed planning zoning applications, including the applications by pilgrims for rezoning a property near the intersection of Highway three twenty and I-85, and a request for a conditional use permit to operate a poultry rendering plant, pet food ingredient plant at the same location. The board will take action on these and any other planning and zoning items, I think there's one other one, at the regular meeting that same evening following the public hearing. Normally, we start the regular meeting at six, we will carry over the public hearing until everyone who wants has a chance to speak, and we may, depending on the time, take a short recess, and then we'll go right into our regular meeting. Previously, we advertised this meeting would take place at the Franklin County High School Ag Center, however, we changed the location of these two meetings to one more suitable, and that will better accommodate the public. Both the public hearing and the planning and zoning meeting, I'm sorry, the public hearing and our board meeting will be held at the Livonia Cultural Center, and this is located at one-two-zero-zero-five Augusta Road in Livonia. The Cultural Center will hold a maximum of two hundred and twenty-five people, and so the American Legion Building, which is right beside the Cultural Center, will be the overflow location. The overflow location will be for viewing only, but we will make an accommodation if you are in the overflow and you wish to speak, for you to be able to come into the meeting and speak if you want. We're going to advertise that change of venue online, in the paper, and also on the radio this week, but if you can help us spread the word, let people you know, know about the change. The times are exactly the same, just the location's different. Mr. Franklin, do you have any announcements?
Yes, sir.